I call to order the January 23rd, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting. Please join me in the flag. Ms. Goodroad, will you please do a roll call of members?
Zuzek?
Aye.
Tinsley?
Aye.
Kaluza?
Marovic?
Here.
Here.
Ike?
Here.
Here.
Agenda item number three, approval of minutes, January 9th, 2025 Planning Commission minutes. Any changes? All right, then those will stand. And agenda item number four, Ms. Jensen, any announcements?
Yes, thank you. I do not have any handouts for you this evening. As for announcements, just wanted to let you know that the Parks Recreation and Natural Resources Committee did not have a quorum last night, so they did not have their meeting and were not able to review and provide you a vote on the Antlers Ridge Second Edition Preliminary Platte. But just as for information, because it was a revised preliminary plat, they did see the initial review of that on July 5th of 2023, so it was not a new project for them. And then if these items aren't tabled, they will move forward to the February 2nd City Council Meeting.
All right, thank you. All right, and all three next agenda items are public hearings, so anyone wishing to speak on any one of the agenda items, please make sure you print your name and address on the appropriate agenda item in the back of the room. Now, item number five, Antlers Ridge Second Edition. This is a public hearing to consider the application of Tammerack Land Lake Marion Commons LLC for the preliminary plat for 26 twin home lots to be known as Antlers Ridge Second Edition and a conditional use permit for a shoreland impact plan within the Shoreland Overlay District of Lake Marion located east of Kenrick Avenue and west of Kensfield Trail. And we have, so sorry. Mr. Herman, to give a brief overview of the project.
Dear members of the commission, thank you very much for your time, not only in review of the application, but also in your time tonight and the consideration of our application. My name is Nate Herman. I am the civil engineer for the project. I'm also the developer's representative here tonight, so I can certainly stand by to answer any questions. I know we were here, I don't know, maybe not quite a year ago, or maybe it was about a year ago that we were here for the first round. And we did go through with Phase One, so Phase One is constructed and, you know, building permits are able to be pulled when our home building is the builder for the development. And we do have a slight change that we're coming back through the public hearing process with our second addition. We, you know, kind of in summary, but the developer was able to have conversations with the neighbor at the towing company. And, you know, there was some interest that, you know, potentially they could find a new parcel and we could add this to the development. They weren't able to find anything at the time, but, you know, we wanted to look at not only our own plat, but, you know, what would happen with that. And so we really wanted to bring the best practice, our best use for both parcels and, you know, just to give one contiguous development that would work well together. And that's what we did, and that's why our application is open today. So I'm happy to answer any questions or let you begin your public hearing process.
Thank you.
Yeah. Questions at the moment?
We'll have staff present and then...
Okay.
Good evening, Chair, Commission members. I'm Heather Button, the Senior Planner with the City of Lakeville. The request in front of you tonight is for property that is located north of Kensfield Trail and east of Kenrick Avenue. The property to the south is Terra Garden Center. And to the north, you're going to see the outlot that was dedicated to the city for a wetland with the first phase of Antlers Ridge. And then north of that is Ideal Rental. To the east of the site is Antlers Ridge First Edition. The property is zoned RST 2, which is the single and two-family residential district, and it is guided medium and high-density residential. The preliminary plat tonight is for 26 twin home lots. There's two common lots and two outlots. Then there's also the conditional use permit for the Shoreland Impact Plan. You may have noticed some information in your packet that talked about a drainage utility easement vacation, so that I want to just make sure that you're aware that that's going to be happening. But the public hearing for that vacation is actually going to happen at the City Council Meeting on February 3rd, so you do not have to take formal action on that tonight. The plat of Antlers Ridge Second, though, does have all the required perimeter easements that's required by the city. So we're just kind of vacating what was approved with the first edition, rededicating on the plat for the second edition. So what you see in front of you here is the grading plan and landscaping plan. The site was mass graded with the preliminary plat approval of the first edition. Access to the property right now will be from 203rd Street and Kensfield Trail. In the future, once the Merrick Towing property is ready to sell and subdivide, you can see in the upper left-hand corner that there is a ghost plat there, so the 203rd Street would continue over to Kenrick Avenue. Landscape, landscaping is continuation of what was approved with the first edition. Any landscaping that is installed off-site will require written permission from the property owners to install any kind of landscaping that's off this property. So the conditional use permit is for the Shoreland Impact Plan. So what is proposed is consistent with the goals and policies of the city's comprehensive plan, and it conforms with all of our performance standards of the city code. And the way that boundary is defined is, you can kind of see in the circle area here that this blue outline, that is a buffer from 1,000 feet of the ordinary high watermark from Lake Marion. So anything within that area, you can see the subject property is outlined in yellow here, is within that Shoreland Overlay District, which then triggers the need for the Shoreland Impact Plan. Any areas within the Shoreland Overlay is, they are required to have a maximum 25% impervious surface for the development. So the proposal is at like a little over 23% for the entire site, so they are in compliance with that requirement. So staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plat and conditional use permit that is in front of you with the nine conditions that's listed in the staff report and the findings of fact that's listed in your packet. So any questions for staff?
We'll open the public hearing first.
All right.
Thank you. All right, anyone wishing to speak on this agenda item can please come forward.
Madam Chair? Seeing no one come forward, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
A motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the public hearing is now closed. Fellow commissioners, any questions? No questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I did just have one question as I'm looking at this. Recognizing there's been discussion with the neighbor about future potential to redevelop this and just the way this is all laying out. As I was looking at the setup with the proposed townhome units and the landscaping kind of in between what exists today, is there any firm understanding where Merrick's is at and potentially relocating, timing, anything like that? Just kind of thinking through if there should be any potential screening kind of between the business and these townhouses in the interim.
Yeah, me personally, I haven't had any conversations with Merrick and Dale Willenbring, you know, representing our owner of Tammerack. He's had the conversations. I can't speak exactly for the conversations he had recently, but last I heard, you know, they were interested, but I don't know, to be completely honest.
No, that's fair. I'm not in a spot where I feel like I want the Planning Commission to have to require a change here with the screening, but I'd just ask to potentially consider it and work with staff on potentially maybe thinking about whether some screening is appropriate in that location as we move forward.
Sure.
I will state otherwise. I like the replat of this. Kind of gets rid of that road connection to Kenrick that was kind of a cause of some consternation when this originally came through with all the driveways and the road and everything all being in a pretty tight fit there. I think this is an appropriate solution for the future. And this development has multiple access points to get in and out of it, regardless of whether that connection is there. So those all seem appropriate. But again, I just kind of ask maybe some consideration be given to some screening between those townhome units on that Outlet A, Outlet B location as this moves forward.
Very good.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would be supportive of that, too. I, like Commissioner Swenson, wouldn't want to impose this as an additional condition, but would like to see that and hope that you work with city staff going forward.
Okay. All right, if there's no other comments, it looks like we might be ready...
I have one other question. Could somebody comment on, whether it be the engineer or staff, on the water drainage, where it goes? It's kind of all downhill toward Marion. Touch base on that. So basically, we got, you know, water runoff comes from the south properties down Stone Brook. And there's a, you know, city pond that outlets through the property. The way the site's been designed and graded, you know, we primarily focused in one large pond. And every, everything, you know, on our site, except for a couple backyards, routes through that pond. And so we mimic existing conditions and certainly pass and meet all the stormwater requirements for quality, volume abstraction, and rate control.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Are you ready for a motion?
Madam Chair? I'd make a motion to recommend approval of Antlers Ridge Second Edition Preliminary Plat and Conditional Use Permit, subject to the nine stipulations listed in the January 16, 2025 Planning Report and adoption of the findings effect.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second. Will you please take a roll call vote?
Zuzek? Tinsley?
Aye.
Kaluza?
Aye.
Marovic?
Aye.
Zimmer?
Aye.
Ike?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
All right, and Ms. Jensen, when will this go in front of City Council?
February 3rd.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Herman, and best luck on the second edition of your project. All right, agenda item number six. This is Air Lake DEA. This is a public hearing to consider the application of Hatrick Investments LLC and Dakota Electric Association for a preliminary and final plat for a two-outlet subdivision to be known as Air Lake DEA, located east of Cedar Avenue and north of 225th Street. And here to give an overview of the project is Jeff Schonecker.
Good evening, Chair, members of the commission. My name is Brian Wardeman. I'm with Kim Lee Horn. I'm the engineer representing both the seller or the developer in the area, current owner, Hatrick Investments, as well as Dakota Electric, who's the future buyer of one of the outlots that's platted as part of this project. So this plat is a continued development or expansion of what would be the Air Lake Industrial Area Launch Park, which is immediately west. So as part of this plat, we'd be extending 222nd Street to land which was, I believe, annexed into the city about two years ago, and we went through an Auar process with Hatrick Investments at that time. So this plat, 222nd Street, would be extended, creating two outlots, one in the north, Outlet A, and then Outlet B on the south, which Dakota Electric would be the future developer and buyer.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Jeff Schonecker, and I'm representing Dakota Electric Association. Our intentions are to develop the lot on the south, the Outlet B. We're very excited about that possibility. We've been in our current site for almost 50 years. We've outgrown it, and we're excited about building a new headquarters. So our intention is to fully develop the site, build the new headquarters upon our board's approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so as I mentioned, this property is located north of 225th Street, which is a gravel road that is served and maintained by Eureka Township, and it's located east of Cedar. And then Farmington, the city Farmington is to the north of the site, and then Township property to the east as well. So this property was annexed in the city in 2021, so time flies, right? So the property at that time then was zoned to I-2, which is our general industrial district, and it is guided industrial in our comprehensive plan. So that tonight, what's in front of you is kind of step one of this process. So it's just a preliminary plat for Outlet, two outlots for the subdivision to be known as Air Lake DEA. The total site is about 115 acres. Outlet A on the north side is about 31.39 acres, and then Outlet B on the south is 78.2 acres. And then the remainder of that property would be dedicated to a right-of-way for the future extension of 222nd Street. So the proposed parcels, they do meet any kind of lot size and width requirements for an industrial development. Sewer and water city utilities are available to the site from the west, but development of the outlot would require plating into an actual lot and block. That process does trigger the public process again. So at that time is when we would be actually looking at site development and site improvements for the southern parcel for Outlet B. So tonight, we're just creating the parcels and kind of step one of this. So staff believes that the proposed plat meets the goals and policies of the zoning code and the city's comprehensive plan, and we are recommending approval of the plat with the three conditions listed in the staff report.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to speak on this agenda item can please come forward.
Madam Chair, Commission members, staff, thank you. Sean Regan, representing Hatrick Investments. I think 30 years ago or so was the first time I came up here. We're, I too want to just tell you how excited we, as owners and operators of this industrial park, that it's been in development for, going back to Jack Matusowski and his predecessors, 70-some years. Well, Dakota Electric here, Jeff and his associates, including the CEO of Ryan Henches, we're really complimentary, we want to be complimentary to both them and Brian and their team and the staff's team for your efforts to shepherd this forward. I think it's, goes, it doesn't need to be said, they're consequential representative in this whole county area, and we're excited to be here and thank you for your continuing efforts to keep it moving.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this agenda item?
Madam Chair? Seeing no one else come forward, I would move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the public hearing is now closed. Fellow Commissioners, any comments on this one? Seems pretty straightforward. Are you ready for a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to recommend approval of the Air Lake DEA Preliminary Plat, subject to the three stipulations listed in the January 16, 2025 Planning Report.
Second.
Ms. Goodroad, will you please take a roll call of members?
Tinsley?
Aye.
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 Zimmer?
Aye.
Ike?
Aye.
Swenson?
Zuzek?
Aye.
Ms. Jensen, when will this one go in front of City Council?
February 3rd.
All right, well, thank you so much, and best of luck on your project. All right, agenda item number seven. This is Midwest ENT, a public hearing to consider a variance to exceed the number of wall signs permitted on one elevation in the freeway corridor district. And here to give a brief overview is Matt O'Keefe, or Matthew O'Keefe.
Hi there, Madam Chair, Commission, city staff. My name is Tony Benusa. I'm the CEO for Midwest ENT Specialists, and I wanted to thank you for your time and consideration tonight of our variance request. First of all, we're very excited to be building a clinic to serve the Lakeville community. So excited, in fact, that we've made an initial 15-year commitment to this property, which is why it's so important for us to ensure that the facility is going to meet our needs from the beginning. And that is the reason for our signage variance request. I've tried to be respectful of your time in summarizing our position and our stated objectives in a letter to you all. But in summary, I think the fact of our business is that we have many different business units and business divisions that are not intuitive to our consumers. And as such, it's important for people to ensure that they know that they are in the right location and at the right building. And while a monument sign helps when you're driving around a development, it is not necessarily readily apparent that that is the right location. It also helps people to understand exactly where they should be entering parking, so on and so forth. And I think this is not unlike other retail-based businesses that might have service line signage indicating some of the services they offer. As I drive by the Lakeville Walmart, I see that they have an additional grocery sign or home and pharmacy to indicate to their consumers that these are services that they offer that may not exist at every single Walmart. So with that, that's the basis for our variance, and I appreciate your time and consideration. I'd be happy to answer any follow-up questions that you have.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is a signed variance request. Just a recap on the location. The Midwest ENT building is currently under construction. They are in the Sundance-Lakeville plat, and their particular lot is located north of 162nd Street and west of Buck Hill Road. They are zoned C3 commercial. Due to the site's proximity to I-35, they are within the freeway corridor district, which is an overlay district that is within our sign ordinance only. On this map, it's illustrated by this black and white dash line. And the properties that are within that district have additional sign allowances. So for example, the Midwest ENT site is within that district. They have larger wall sign and monument sign allowances. And then the line, if I can get my mouse to work here, does cross 46 and then follow Kenrick Avenue South. So for instance, the Moments Memory Care Facility, which is at this corner, would be within the freeway corridor district and have that additional signage allowance. But Bolero, McDonald's, and the office building that are just to the west of Kenrick are not within that freeway corridor district. So they would fall under just the standard signs allowances for the C3 district. This is elevation plans. I'll get a little bit more close-up on the next one. The signs are proposed for the west elevation. That is the elevation we are discussing at this point. They also have a sign on the east elevation. They are allowed a sign on two elevations because they are a corner property. So the sign that is on the east elevation, as well as the monument sign, are both in compliance with our sign ordinance. There's a little bit of an enlargement of that west elevation. So they are proposing their primary sign here, which is the Midwest ENT. And then they have four other smaller signs, too, that are listed down here for their different services or activities that are included within their site. They are also showing some vinyl entrance signs above the entrance. Staff has typically, we've allowed those in other similar circumstances. And unfortunately, the best comparisons I can come up with are more automobile-related. But for instance, at a car wash, there's enter and exit above certain doors, or at an auto repair place, one may have a service and another one's got one lane strictly for oil change. So those kinds of things that are non-commercial, more directional in nature, that we have typically allowed just to help folks make sure they get in the right spot. So the signs that I have listed here do not include those entrance signs. It also does not include the address sign or the address number here. We don't consider that a sign. We don't count it against the total as it is required to be on the building. And there are certain size requirements for fire code and things like that. So the building address would be allowed regardless of the outcome of the variance. And then just a close-up of that east elevation with the wall sign, 114 square feet. Their freestanding sign here, 140 square feet. As I said earlier, both of them are in compliance with our ordinance. This is the west elevation that they exhibit, that they provided for us. And then the east side with the sign and the monument sign in the distance. And then the site plan, just as a refresher, this is the building's location. We've got Buck Hill Road, County Road 46. So again, it's a corner property. It does allow those signs on two sides. And then the one thing I just wanted to quick go through, I have my information here. We did prepare findings of fact and variances. As you're probably aware, we don't bring a lot of those forward. The ordinance does require that in order for staff and the council to support a variance, the request needs to meet the threshold of a practical difficulty. And so the review criteria that are listed within the ordinance are within that findings of fact, and I just wanted to go over those quickly. The first is that the variance would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. That one's not applicable. The comprehensive plan doesn't address signs. The second is that the variance would be in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the title. Our finding is that the applicant is requesting five wall signs for one elevation of a single-tenant building, which is not consistent with the surrounding commercial uses and other single-tenant commercial buildings of a similar size in Lakeville, and therefore, it's not in harmony. Mr. Benusa mentioned the Walmart further south on I-35. That does have additional signage. It is also within the freeway corridor district. The additional signs are granted because of the size of the building. There is a threshold, I believe, of 45,000 square feet. And above that, the buildings are allowed additional signage. This building's about 14,000 square feet, so it isn't close to that threshold that would allow some additional signs. The next criteria is that the plight of the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the landowner. Staff does not find that there's any unique circumstances to the parcel or practical difficulties that would warrant a variance to permit additional signs. That the purpose of the variance is not exclusively economic considerations. Don't feel that one's applicable here. That the granting of the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood in which the parcel of land is located. Other commercial uses in the vicinity of the site have the same or smaller sign standards, and all have complied with the zoning ordinance. Finally, that the requested variance is the minimum action required to eliminate the practical difficulty. Staff finds that there's no practical difficulty for signs on the... Staff finds that there's no practical difficulty for signs on this new construction building, while the total area of the proposed signs does not exceed the size allowances of the freeway corridor district. The applicant's proposal for five signs is well beyond the one wall sign permitted in that district. And then I guess there's one more. Variances may not be approved for any use not allowed under that title for that zone. Again, that one's not applicable as signs are a permitted use, permitted accessory use, excuse me, in that C3 district. So, staff does recommend denial of this variance, and then approval of the findings of fact. This is a public hearing, and I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Anyone wishing to speak on this agenda item can please come forward.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Make you wait a little bit. Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
In a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, the public hearing is now closed. Fellow Commissioners, yes.
Madam Chair, can I just get some clarification? So, this is one business with other businesses under it?
Yeah, so technically, we are a single tenant under the lease.
Okay.
We have multiple tax IDs for the businesses that will be operating in, within this building. We have some of the brands and the doing business as names that are registered with the state of Minnesota fall under one tax ID. And one of the doing business as names falls under a separate tax ID. Internally, as an organization, we do cost allocations and keep separate accounting to ensure that the separate business units are financially viable independently. And I think that's what I was trying to allude to when I made the comment that retail space, we operate like a multi-tenant organization in a single building, and a retail space that would be multi-tenant of the same size would have much more signage allowed than we are afforded. And so, I apologize for not being clear. I saw that in staff's report, and I appreciated that distinction. We use multiple entrances, and even within those entrances, we have a separate vestibule that will then have directional signage to point people towards the right service line that they will be seeking from, from our organization. I hope that answers your question.
It does. And then just a clarification, the monument sign, that will have all the other entities on the monument sign?
There are the service lines that we have. So, I would tell you that our monument sign is not our, our desired path forward, but knowing, but knowing that the city has a specific set of requirements, we have taken the opportunity to utilize the monument sign to advertise our service lines or our brands in, in an attempt to, to try to make it as clear as possible. Had we not already built the monument sign, I would gladly forego that for an approval of our signage on our building. But I think what we've tried to submit in coming under in the total allowed square footage is a reasonable compromise to achieve our goals, but still try to comply with, I think, the aesthetic feel that the city of Lakeville is trying to achieve. And I think it's still very tasteful, but will allow people to understand our building. And this is very consistent with what we have in other municipalities.
So, the entrances that are separate, do they have different suite numbers, or?
They do not.
It's still single use or single tenant? Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you much.
Separate lobbies.
Okay.
Same thing.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Are you Mr. Gokee?
I'm Mr. Benusa. This is Matt O'Keefe.
You, I still didn't catch your name, but anyway.
Anthony Benusa.
Okay. The five signs that you're looking for, are they in contrast? Are they, they're all similar? That's, I mean, what's your schematic for it? Will any of them be lighted or have any dancing milk cartons? I just had to get that line in. And then if you are coming for a particular service and you go to the wrong one, how do you get from the wrong one to the next one that you need to be at?
Yeah, it's a great question. I know that there's a rendering that's submitted. I don't know if there's a way for me to... Can I also ask a question about the dancing milk cartons, and if that is a reference to something that I'm unaware of? Yes, we're trying to maintain, this is just a quick backstory. I'll try to be respectful of your time. Actually, as we do business, we have five different business entities that we do business as. And we've tried to create distinct brands as we've brought on different service lines. So, we actually have Midwest Facial Plastics, Midwest ENT, Midwest Allergy and Asthma, Midwest Hearing, and Midwest Face and Cosmetic Skincare. We have tried to consolidate this down so that we don't have Midwest and, and we're not using branded logos everywhere. We just want people to understand that associated with the Midwest, core Midwest brand, that they are in the right place when they're coming for their allergy and asthma care. So, to, to off, to indicate those service lines, we have used the same sign typeface and, and size and color for all of the service lines, except for the face cosmetic skincare, which is its own, its separate brand. They are backlit, I believe, facelit. No dancing milk jugs.
Matt O'Keefe, architect, Synergy Architecture Studio, and representative for Davis, the developer and owner of the construction. What we've designed is with the letters, they've got, in the daytime, it looks like a solid face or a, you know, metal letter, but they're, everyone is kind of the new thing. So, at night, the faces of them will light up, but during the day, they're kind of a solid color that aesthetically is connected to the other finishes and materials of the building. But there are no dancing signs. There's no movement signs. I, I mean, we laugh, but a lot of healthcare wants 15 minutes, you know, waiting or something like that. You know, display signage that trips every 10 minutes, you know, and stuff like that.
Well, and I'm, for a follow-up, I'm thinking of the Vikings stadium and the Twin City Orthopedic sign that everyone complained about because it was so overly lit, so.
I mean, they deserve a medal for getting that signage on that building, because yes. But with this one, we, as we've done in other municipalities, is, we understand, we're not really trying to overpower the
Thank you.
Kind of what Commissioner Zimmer was referring to, the dancing milk jugs, is we, every year go through a ordinance update process. And in the 10 years I have been on this planning commission, there hasn't been a single one of those that doesn't have an update to the sign ordinance. And so, we continually hear from businesses, from the public, on ways that we can update that. And it, the dancing milk jugs come from, you know, those electronic display signs, which we used to prohibit. Now, we allow them. We used to have very strict regulations on how quickly they can change. That has evolved. When we hear from businesses on areas where we might need a change, our city staff does a really great job of kind of taking that, considering, are there going to be other businesses where this situation might arise? I am supportive of what the staff wrote in the planning report. With variances, our hands are really tied. They are in state law that every one of the criteria have to be met. I agree with city staff in my looking at it, my reading of it, that all of those criteria are, are met. So, I don't feel like we have any other option but to deny the variance. But since we do this ordinance process every year, you know, I would encourage you to keep dialoguing with city staff. If they believe that, you know, this, you know, we could come up with a, a solution that can find its way in a future ordinance update, I, you know, they will bring it before us. We'll have another public hearing. We've had many people come before us with, with requests that unfortunate, it's unfortunate, it's no for now, but because it's really important that our ordinances for all of our businesses, everyone feels that they get the same opportunity and are treated fairly. So, if, if changes need to be made, that opportunity should be open to everyone else. So, you know, I, that's another reason why I don't usually like variances, because, you know, we're just addressing a problem for, for one individual. So, I am not supportive of the variance and, and plan to vote no, but I really do appreciate all the work you've done on this building. Really excited to have you be here in Lakeville. All of the services that you guys provide are things our community definitely needs and wants. So, I'm really happy to have you here, and just keep dialoguing with city staff.
Because we did the Lakeville project, nine different, very similar to Midwest, got nine different specialties. You know, and the signage is discussion, it's almost the second discussion around a building design.
It might not surprise you, but in three of the other communities that we have built in, we have requested sign variances, and two of them, all of our buildings look like this at this point. And I think, I under, I completely understand the structure and the process and the reason behind it. But much like you like to provide a consistent experience for your constituents, we like to provide a very consistent experience for our patients and the members of your community who, as we do the zip code analysis, are coming to see us in Woodbury, and in Badness Heights even, and in Eagan right now, because we're not here. We just want to make sure that they have the same experience when they see us in their own communities they do when they've come to see us elsewhere.
Yes.
So, question for planning staff, just, just kind of considering everything that's been said and discussed here. So, we're in this box because it's a single tenant in the building, correct?
Correct.
So, if this were a multi-tenant building, would they be allowed to do something similar to this?
The ordinance does address multiple occupancy commercial buildings, but it does require tenants to have an exclusive entrance. In other words, each business has their own space, and those businesses then get their sign. The, a line of medical office that was mentioned off of 185th, that's the large three, four-story building, it does have signs for several of the tenants in there. We do also have a provision that, and it was kind of geared more towards office buildings or situations like that, where there is one single entrance, rather than each tenant having their own. So, when those tenants have more than, they don't have an exclusive exterior entrance, but they have more than 20% of the lease space, then our ordinance does allow that business to have a sign on the exterior. But again, those were, you know, separate, different, you know, clinics from the, how it was explained to me, and we did look at the floor plans and, and do those measurements. And they were, you know, separate spaces within that building. And so, the, the signs were issued. They did meet our ordinance requirements, so.
I have a question with that. You said 20, if they have 20% of the lease space?
The net leasable area of the building.
And it looks like on here, like there's a separate entrance for the spa and a separate entrance for the main entrance?
Yeah, that's how they have their setup. I don't know if there's connection. I've not seen a floor plan. I don't know if there's connection once you get inside.
There can't be connection when you get inside?
I, you know, if, if the spa area is a completely separate, and there's not, you know, once you get inside, you can move through the whole building, you know, then perhaps we can consider that that may meet the, the requirements for a separate sign. But if it's simply two separate entrances, but once you're in the building, it's one large space, in my opinion, that does not meet the, our definition or our intent of separate commercial spaces.
So, ideally, on this facade, we could put a 10-foot-tall-by-15-foot sign box with all those names in one sign box. And that would meet code. Okay?
Madam Chair, that was exactly the question I was just gonna ask. Staff was, I'm, I'm hearing the numbers are below the 150 square feet that we allow in total, basically, for all these proposed signs. If they're rearranged in some way, shape, or fashion?
I mentioned that option within the staff report, that if they, you know, put the signs in a, in a different arrangement, and we can put, you know, one box around there, and that box is 150 square feet, that is how we have traditionally, and I've been working on signs for almost 20 years in Lakeville, so we've been pretty consistent over that, that time. So.
Madam Chair, in light of what Ms. Jensen had said, can we ask the applicant, is it separate entrances, or once you walk in, are you able to just walk? Like, is it an inside mall?
It's a good question. If you are a patient or a client consumer walking into the spa entrance, it is going to be a wholly separate experience. It's partitioned off with a fixed wall. And it's not until you get to the very back of the building, where our clinic staff are going to be moving through, that you would have the inability to see a connection between the two businesses. But it is actually designed to be a separate feel, so that the patient or client in that case is going to have a wholly separate experience from the time they enter to the time that they then leave. They will not see a connection between the organizations. The main entrance floor is an, a vestibule that splits in two directions. And the same is essentially true of the, the two different directions. So, you have a more medically-based side that is our hearing side, our ENT side, and our asthma and allergy side. And within that, they get separated out, but they are still part of a larger common area. The, the facial plastics medical side, we see a lot of Moe's patients, Moe's reconstruction and medically-based facial plastics reconstruction is a separate and distinct area within, from that other medical side as well. So, there is, there are, there is connection in the building, but we've tried to keep that mostly for staff between three distinct segments.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll add on that a little bit. My son is a patient at Midwest ENT in Eagan. And going in, the vestibules are split. So, you can either go this way to go to one side, or you go this way to the ENT. And like he mentioned, I've never even seen like the spa stuff. And then when you get called back, there's like a line of rooms, right? And so, you're going into a room, and And so you're going into a room, and that's where you could walk through, but as a patient, you really wouldn't go to like the other end.
And you're being escorted.
And you're being escorted, yes, by staff. So like, they'll call you back, and then they bring you to the room, and you're in the room, and when you leave, you leave. And, I mean, I will say, I found the signage helpful when I went, because the one in Eagan is behind Chick-fil-A, and it's kind of hard to find. And if you could please get Dr. Zachary to come out of retirement, I would appreciate it. Oh, so do I, so much, so much. Okay. Yes.
I just have a quick question for staff. Is there a way, since we've now learned that the spa is actually a separate entrance, separate to clients, customers, patients, whatever you call them, is there a way to have signage on at least that portion?
I think it would need to be a completely separate. It sounds like from the patient customer side, it's separated, but for the employees, it's still shared space.
So not a door for employees to separate them away from the other practices? That's for Anthony. Or, that's okay.
I mean, as a, as a design process, there are definitely separate waiting rooms. There's actually five as you go across for all the different sectors, and they're kind of sectioned out. But once you get back, there's, the staff members handle multiple departments on a daily basis with different patients. And there's also some, you know, one patient for ENT might need to get to the hearing side, so there are definitely connections, just like in a, in a Lina clinic or a Fairview clinic and stuff like that. But it is separated for patient experience with some of the lobbies, and that is, again, kind of the front entrance of why we have two different, you know, entry doors and stuff like that, so.
Okay, thank you.
It's intentionally designed, but I will say flat out, like, they're connected, right? Like, as an architect or even as an exiting purpose plan, like, the whole clinic acts as one when you're talking about an occupancy point of view.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I just think from my standpoint, this is a statement of position, is I am sympathetic to your issue, and I, the aesthetics of your building would work well, but the signage you show here, I think we need to be careful from our standpoint, that once we grant a variance for something like this, if we have somebody else come along that wants to do the same thing, but is a little bit more loud, I think we need to have a little bit more thought than to grant a variance today. And I think as the other commissioner had indicated, is, you know, let's, let's think about this for a little bit and see if we can improve it, make adjustments, as opposed to doing something tonight that we may not necessarily find appealing at another time.
Yeah, and, thank you, Madam Chair. And yeah, just to build on that, you know, our hands are also somewhat tied with the variance process, because what we have to consider is the variance that's in front of us, and it's a very specific process, it's laid out in statute, and there's an application for it and everything. So there's not really an opportunity to kind of, you know, work on this on the fly, where there's some other projects, when there's someone's coming in for, you know, preliminary plat, where we can make amendments and add conditions, are, we're kind of limited to addressing the issue that's in front of us, and there's not a lot of latitude that we can do to make changes on that. So, once again, I just say, like, you know, I, I really do appreciate you coming in, and I, I understand what you're trying to get at, but a variance isn't the appropriate vehicle to try to do it.
So I took the time today and drove past your Badness Heights facility, I happened to work up in that part of the metro and take a look at that, and also went past the Eagan facility and just got a feel for how this looks. And, you know, all in all, I appreciate the thought that's put into the branding and the way it looks, and I'm sympathetic to the plight of what you're trying to do with this, and it's all very tasteful, and it looks very, very nice. But also, I'm, I'm looking at our variance criteria and understanding what the requirements are there. And this board, this commission, has taken that very seriously in the past in terms of what we do with variances and that type of thing. I appreciate you mentioning that variances may have been part of the process on some of these other buildings as well. With all that being said, that, you know, positionally, I'm in a spot where I feel like I can't support the variance here in front of us tonight. That being said, if we had other conversation, I, no timing is of the essence in all of this, in thinking about that, but I would be open to conversation as a commission and as a body with city staff, talking about how can we maybe do this. Also, just again, going to point out that, hey, there is an opportunity here, maybe to rearrange the signage a little bit and meet that, that box of what we currently require. So that's, that's where I come out on this. And with that, I'm not going to be voting in support of the variance request.
Madam Chair, you ready for a motion?
I think so.
Madam Chair, I motion to recommend denial of the Midwest ENT sign variance to exceed one wall sign on a single elevation in the freeway corridor district and adopt the findings of fact.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Can we please have a roll call vote?
Kaluza?
Aye.
Marovitch?
Aye.
Zimmer?
Aye.
Twinson?
Aye.
Zuzik? Tinsley?
All right. We really appreciate you coming to Lakeville. I'm sorry that it didn't work out in your favor right now, but like the other commissioners have said, please continue to work with city staff, and hopefully, hopefully we can find something that works for both. Thank you. And with that? The meeting is adjourned.